Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special work session of the Atumal City Council. I'm going to call our meeting to order, and if everybody would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Mike McRae. Councilmember Cavanus.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
The next item on our agenda is to approve tonight's agenda, so our motion to approve.
No, sir.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavanus.
Here.
Yes, so. Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
The next item is the city administrator's reports. I'll turn it over to Phil Rapp. I'm city administrator.
Thank you, Admiral Mayor. As I noted in my report to the city council and citizens last week, in order to be competitive in attracting development, whether commercial or housing, there has to be a conversation regarding our comfort level related to development incentives. In the past, projects may have occurred based upon demand with incentives determined on a case-by-case basis, usually in the form of a tax rebate through urban renewal. With cities being able to acquire money at a cheaper rate recently, the landscape of incentives requested by developers is shifting. Staff and our government partners are being asked what incentives are available. To begin the conversation and assist with those responses in the future, a panel of specialists in the field as well as local individuals affected by this topic have been invited to share their perspective. Information from this panel, along with future conversations, will be used to draft a document to highlight the various incentives offered at the levels the current elected officials are comfortable with supporting. And with that, I will turn the panel discussion over to Mark Rowe, Executive Director of Greater Atumal Partners in Progress.
Well, first of all, I do want to say thank you, Mayor, Council, and Wapalo County Supervisors, for kind of a unique opportunity. We don't get the opportunity to share the same room and deliver the message to everybody at the same time. So I know that this is taking a lot from all of your schedules, so I do appreciate this, and hopefully we can have more meaningful conversations like this in the future. On behalf of GOPIP, the Atumal Regional Legacy Foundation, Mission 500, more importantly, I'm excited that we can get together this evening and draw this panel together and talk about the future of our community, because this is one of the most important things that we need to look at when we're talking about what the growth of the City of Atumal and Wapalo County ribbon looks like. So looking from Washington DC to state government to local government, public private partnerships have been the backbone of building our economies and communities. Multiple examples of success stories, some of which you're going to hear tonight, highlighting the wins of communities across Iowa that have celebrated because of all of these partnerships. Even Iowa Governor Kim Reynolds stated not too long ago, and I quote, "When you do public-private partnerships, that's where we see a lot of success. The state has a role, the local government has a role, and the private sector has a role. When you stack all of that funding, we do get some good things going," end quote. And on this, she's right on point, and I'd like to name a few examples, because I think that they're all relevant to tonight's conversation. Knoxville, Iowa, where public dollars went to spawn the development of more than 100 acres of new homes that will be property tax generators in the future. Pala, Iowa, where public infrastructure dollars went to help residents buy and build new homes so they could live and work in the same community. Des Moines, Iowa, where public funding went to offset construction costs that spawned an entirely new industry for the city while creating new employment opportunities and at the same time creating a more robust housing demand. Fort Dodge, Iowa, where public dollars went to give rebirth to a dying retail district. Alman, Iowa, where incentives were the final piece of the puzzle to create more than a dozen new market-rate houses that the community desperately needed. That list goes on and on and on. What all these communities share in common with Atumal? Size isn't it, that's for sure. Most of these communities are smaller than Atumal, with the obvious exception of Des Moines, and operate on smaller budgets than Atumal. Simply put, what they do have in common with Atumal is they spend time saying, "If they want to come, they will come," or "We're giving away the farm." Neither of which is true. What all of those communities learned is that there's a provable positive economic impact to these public-private partnerships to the community that doesn't negatively impact the city's cash flow for the taxpayer if it's used judiciously. Over time, the property tax flow wouldn't have been realized had it not acted. More residents means more local auction sales and service tax revenue, more stable local business, and higher payroll for the city. More people means higher funding for our schools. Finally, more people means more opportunity for quality-of-life amenities. It's vital for us to remember, and all of these communities embraced as general knowledge, is that we are no longer competing against the next town over like we were 50 years ago, 60 years ago. We have a global economy. It's transient, it's technologically advanced, and we're truly competing with the entire world. Manufacturing and commercial business can exist anywhere and is open to the highest bidder possible. Employees can work from anywhere, so what is it that we can offer that they can't find elsewhere? We, as a community, basically have two options at our disposal. We rise with knowledge and proclaim that we, Atumal, are open for business, or we continue the path of normalcy and ask, "Why not Atumal?" While I believe that everybody sitting here in a position of authority doesn't want to ask that question, we would rather be spending our time answering the question, "Why Atumal?" Tonight, GOPIP and Mission 500 is proud to present experts in their respective fields of the incentives that are available and describe what has worked in places like Atumal, and you'll hear from employers who face these struggles on a daily basis, a realtor who sells the community to potential residents and businesses, and see Atumal through the eyes of the new resident. And just to conclude before I turn it over to our first speaker, I know everybody's time is valuable here tonight, and again, I appreciate you all taking time to be here. As such, and to respect everyone who's taking part in the discussion, I do ask that you write down all of your comments and your questions, and we'll take those at the end of the discussion. We won't be answering questions in the middle of the discussion, so just know that we'll save all of that to the end. So with that, again, thank you, and I want to turn it over first to Mike McCree, who is the Vice President of CBRRE Real Estate.
Excuse me, thank you, Mark. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, city staff. Good evening, supervisors. I want to start out by just informing everyone, I've provided you a written copy with my business card with what I've been speaking about today. I'm probably going to end up paraphrasing it, but I wanted to at least give you the copy so you have it both currently and for the future. So let me introduce myself. My name is Mike McCree. I am Vice President at CBRRE of Advisory and Transaction Services out of the Des Moines office. Additionally, I'm a certified commercial investment member for CCIM. I'm a counsel of real estate, which is one of 1,000 of the top real estate professionals worldwide. I'm also an associate professor in the College of Design at Iowa State, where I teach real estate development and community and economic development. I've also had the privilege of working with Mark on the Helpers of Flash project now for some time. We've developed a great working relationship with that project. I've been asked to discuss the viability and opportunities presented by incorporating economic incentive packages on the commercial residential basis. While communities across the state offer various incentives, stimulate growth, create jobs, and address economic challenges, it's essential to recognize that economic development and incentives are prevailing in nearly every community and sector in the state. The state of Iowa meaningfully and strategically invests in the Iowa Economic Development Authority to promote Iowa as an attractive place to live and do business. However, these efforts are broad and focused on, and not focused on, market-specific properties or communities. I've worked in various communities across the state of Iowa on economic development strategies. We can examine various communities in Iowa regardless of size and see the different strategies they use to drive population growth, increase tax base, and boost economic, boost employment, and model any proposed strategies that we propose here in Atumal and Wapalo County off these existing proven models. One thing I wanted to hit on that is in the letter as well, I've kind of hit on five key points that tax abatement, as an example, is used in the state of Iowa. And frankly, Nathan, I don't want to step on your toes, because I know you're probably going to hit on these as well. So I'm going to paraphrase some of these, just so everybody can kind of understand, based on the code and how it's written, what is permissible for the use of, for example, tax abatement. Number one would be a predominance of buildings and improvements, residential or non-residential, because they're dilapidated, deteriorated, obsolescent, inadequate ventilation, light or air situations, or other open spaces. High density of population or overcrowding, and the existence of conditions that would endanger life and property by fire or other causes. I'm paraphrasing these, because I know Nathan's going to probably agree with these as well. Two would be the presence of substantial numbers of deteriorated or deteriorating structures, predominance of defective, inadequate street layouts, excuse me, incompatible land relationships, faulty lot layouts and the relationship of size, adequacy, and accessibilities of usefulness. Third is the preponderance of buildings and improvements with the reason, which reason of age, history, architecture, significance should be preserved or restored. Fourth is to encourage economic development in areas as defined in Section 403 in the state code. And then number five is the areas appropriate for public improvements relating to housing, residential development, or the construction of housing and residential development, including single and multifamily housing. I want to point those out, because it's important to understand what the state code and laws allow with these type of uses, so that you understand where you can go with these things. Abatement, as residential markets have been, abatement in residential markets has been effectively used throughout the state to increase new development and incentivize redevelopment of existing structures. This is used in communities like Dyke, Iowa, and Pleasant Hill. These communities, for example, have residential tax abatements for a specific period of time on a sliding scale based on the taxable incentives for construction. For example, they may have a five-year sunset, where there's a certain amount of time that program can go on, and if you invest $150,000 in a good development, you may have a three-year abatement, or $300,000, it's a five-year abatement, or something over $500,000, it's a seven-year abatement. These are all various programs that are developed by the communities. Another program that you hear commonly is TIF, or Tax Increment Financing. It's based on taxable incentives and projected economic benefits from Iowa Code 403, different from the tax abatement code, where cities by ordinance create urban revitalization areas to establish redevelopment and resolve the problems that they're looking for. Number one, TIF is a tool used by cities to use to enhance the wide range of development effects. After establishing the TIF district, cities can do a number of things, including public improvement projects to encourage new development or assist redevelopment activities. It's interesting, too, that this TIF does not go on for everything. There is a cap or a sunset on these terms. You have a 20-year period of time that, at Urban Renewal District, of which TIF can be used, is allowed. After that, it expires, it's a sunset. The other thing that's important to know is, in Iowa, there's not a, it's not permitted to have what's called a "but-for" test, where economic incentives are commonly used to offset the costs that are either specific to a project or related to specific economic hurdles and assistance. It's not a matter of, "We would go and do this project but for these issues." It's, "We have a gap, we're trying to fill it, and there's ways. That's what we're looking to do with it." TIF, as it relates to the United States, is used in a lot of different ways. There's 49 states, including the District of Columbia, that allows TIF. Arizona is the only state that does not permit it. Three states, including Connecticut, Kansas, and Texas, restrict the use of TIF to commercial industrial properties only. At least 36 states reference light or either a prerequisite for implementation of TIF as one of their various conditions under which they allow. Nevada intensely categorizes, or categorizes, required light prior to establishing a TIF area. 15 states require TIF, require that TIF meets some kind of but-for test. As I mentioned, Iowa is not one of those. In 32 states, Iowa among them, TIF may be used to finance, to be financed through issuance of general obligation bonds whereby municipal pledge the full faith and credit of repayment. It's an important thing, too, and I'm sure Nathan will get to this as well, is there's two ways to fund this, whether it's through revenue bonds through the project or through general obligation bonds. That's something the cities can decide and the counties can decide how they want to do and what they want to use, based on those incomes that are used. Communities will often, as part of their economic development packages, be considerate in thinking of jobs-based incentives. And communities like Urbain Dale, Cedar Rapids, and Iowa City will utilize and understand the employment opportunities for each project that the city managers and their government development officials negotiate in these incentive packages as to what additional incentives that are jobs-based that come from the state and other organizations. I've built a strong working relationship with Mark and the Atumal Partners in Progress. I'm eager to continue collaborating with them and to enhance the community and create a sustainable economic package that sets standards for growth. Additionally, you have my business cards as well. I've provided a lot of very high-level information here. If there's any questions after the fact in the coming days, please reach out to me as well. Thank you very much.
Next, we will hear from Nathan Overberg from Allers Cooney, PC in Des Moines.
Good evening, council, board supervisors, staff, and citizens. My name is Nathan Overberg. I'm an attorney at the Allers Cooney Law Firm in Des Moines, Iowa, and economic development is what I do. I work with communities from Creston to Cresco, from Kiakut to Rock Rapids, and everywhere in between. Mike was going through a list, Urbain Dale, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, Pala, Marion County, Des Moines. They're all clients, so I don't do that to my own horn. I tell you that you have resources available to you if and when you decide to implement and utilize these tools in a way that you're already doing it. Mike was actually a great springboard for me to talk about what Atumal already has. Mike was going through urban revitalization, which is a tax abatement tool. You already have a citywide urban revitalization area in place with an existing urban revitalization plan. In that plan, years ago, you found that you met the criteria Mike went through, including blighted, historic, appropriate for economic development. You have abatement schedules already on the books with respect to residential, residential with historic value, multi-residential, commercial, and industrial. So that tool is in place. And you do not currently have maximum schedules in all of those areas, but you have what I would call middle-of-the-road schedules, so nothing to be ashamed of. But I do think that you're open for business with respect to that tool. The question is, are you utilizing it in a way? Are you advertising it? Are you bootstrapping it together with other incentives to make your community attractive? And I will leave that to your great staff and policymakers to decide if you are. But you should know that you have the urban revitalization tool already in the toolbox, and the question is, how are you going to use it, and how are you going to use it going forward? Just with respect to a little background, you know, I'm not going to come up here and explain these tools to you in detail. That presentation, which I do almost on a weekly basis, is about two hours in length, and I have 15 minutes. But urban revitalization, what I was talking about, is a tax abatement tool. What that means is, if someone completes qualified improvements on their property and it increases the assessed value of that property, that increased value is not currently, is not taxed if they apply for tax abatement and they receive that tax abatement. So it's just the increased value that's subject to tax abatement. The value that was already there, you continue to pay taxes on. How much of that increased value is abated or not subject to taxes, and for how long, is set forth in your plan. And as Mike referenced, there are maximum schedules that you could include in there. I would mention, I really like urban revitalization tax abatement as a tool, because it's something that, once you get established, is available, and as long as someone meets the requirements of the plan and applies, then it's there for them. It takes a little staff involvement to make it work. Unfortunately, the state legislature last year, in very popular House File 718, on the city perspective, removed from tax abatement the school tax levies with respect to residential properties, both single-family, multi-residential, low and moderate income, any type of property that's assessed as residential. What that means is, going forward, if someone completes improvements to their home or builds an entire new apartment complex, with respect to that increased value, they're going to have to pay all of their school taxes with respect to that, that value. Regardless of kind of where you stand politically, on whether that's good, bad, or in-between, from a dollars and cents standpoint, what that means is, for residential projects, it has decreased the effectiveness of tax abatement by about 45 to 50%, because often, that's about what the school levies make up with respect to the entire consolidated levy. That is just with respect to residential projects, but I do think it's kind of a step in the wrong direction for an entire state that needs housing. So I make that pitch, because if you have connections to your legislature and you happen to agree with me that maybe we need more housing, or my business friends up here on the panel want to make that pitch to their Chamber of Commerce representatives, I think that that's something that could be easily undone if they were so persuaded to do that. The other tool that Mike referenced is urban renewal and TIF, which kind of go hand and glove. It is a separate tool that's in your toolbox, and you also use that. We are sitting in an urban renewal area. You're sitting probably in a project that utilized urban renewal to some extent, and I know that the hotel next door utilizes, or was the product of some TIF rebate incentives. How TIF rebates work, as Mike alluded to, is if you go through all of the hoops, and there are many, and you enter into a development agreement with the developer, the increased value, again, it's just the increased value that is in play here. They pay their taxes on that. It is not, if you use TIF, you do not increase taxes on anyone. It is just how those taxes get split up by the county auditor. If you have a TIF project and you certify that debt, then the county auditor is told that they need to separate some of the county taxes on that increased value and some of the school taxes on that increased value, and put that in the city's TIF fund, that then they use to pay debt for an urban renewal project, which in a development revens setting means they use those TIF dollars to make rebate payments for grants to the business who is increasing value in your community or bringing jobs to your community or maintaining jobs in your community. So again, it's not a tool that increases taxes, it's just how those taxes get divided. All of the taxes on the base value, the original value, continues to flow to all of the taxing entities, and it's, with respect to all the taxes on the increased value, there are certain levies that continue to flow to the regular taxing entities. The school district continues to receive their ISPL levies and their PEPL levies. All of the taxing bodies continue to receive their debt service levies on that increased value. So even with respect to the increased value, you're not collecting all of the tax dollars from all the taxing entities into the TIF account. There is, I would mention that, although Mike referenced, there is usually a sunset on how long you can collect tax increment. There are exceptions. One of those exceptions is if the urban renewal area was created prior to 1995. Another exception is if any portion of the urban renewal area has been designated as blighted or slum. And again, this particular building sits in the Gateway, I think is the name of it. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Westgate.
Westgate, thank you. Westgate Urban Renewal Area, which did have an original blighted designation, and so there's currently not a limitation on how long you can collect tax increment in the Westgate Urban Renewal Area, which essentially runs through the downtown area. There is an obligation when a taxing body is using public funds to identify the public purpose, right? And so the most common used for economic development purposes is Chapter 15A of the code. So if you ever hear that danted about, that's because in Chapter 15A, the Iowa Legislature said it is a public purpose to use public taxpayer dollars for grants, loans, abatement, rebates, to incentivize economic development, which is defined as job creation and retention. So often, if we're talking about a commercial or industrial improvement, we're not only talking about how much value they're going to bring with respect to assessment, but how many jobs they're going to retain or maintain. The Iowa Supreme Court has reviewed that code section and said they agree that economic development is a public purpose for which you can spend taxpayer dollars. And so whether you're utilizing TIF dollars or, kind of pass this now, but ARPA money, or general fund money, or other revolving loan money that you may have on hand, any of those dollars can be used to further economic development under Chapter 15A. And so you could provide grants to a business under that code pursuant to a development agreement without going through the urban renewal TIF process, et cetera. You can, I heard it kind of mentioned about how far you want to go. I'm a big fan of rebates, because what that means is, the project has been successfully completed and that business owner is paying their taxes. And so then the tax dollars come into you through the TIF process, and you're basically giving them back, or a portion of their tax dollars, back to the developer. There, you can go further, as was mentioned, and increase or do some type of upfront contribution towards the project. That can be in the form of completing infrastructure, whether that's roads, getting sewer or water to the development property, et cetera. You could provide some type of upfront grant to help them with initial construction costs and fill a gap in their capital stack, et cetera. When you do that, however, it obviously increases the amount of risk to the city, because you're advancing money, and there is always a risk that the development doesn't get fully developed, or it's not successful for a long period of time. So when you do that, we'll talk to you about how can we try to reduce that risk through minimum assessment agreements, or shortfall arrangements, or mortgages, or other things to try to protect your investment in that project. So again, it is about risk tolerance and how much you want to participate and how keen you are in a particular project. What we've seen across the state, for example, some communities really need just a grocery store. Some communities need more daycare. Some communities have no hotels. At least you're blessed to have all of those things here to some level. But those communities will be really incentivized to try to bring in one of those businesses, and so they may be willing to take a little more risk to do that in respect to other businesses. I think I've probably exceeded my 15 minutes, for which I apologize. But those are kind of the outlines I wanted to provide. I'm always available to talk to you more in another work session if you want to go into the nuts and bolts of any of those tools and talk more about all the steps you have to do to utilize them. But that's what I wanted to cover first. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. One of the things that we wanted to really impress upon everybody is not really, and Mike and Nathan have done a really good job of explaining what incentives are, but how is that put into practice? And with our next speaker, they are using those incentives to put incentives into practice, and that would be Amal. I'll take. And uh, that would be Amal, I'll take here, who is the city manager of the city of Oskaloosa. And I believe that she has a presentation. You ready to go?
Thank you, Mark. I prepared a presentation, but I changed my mind. I like to, because you guys did a great job describing what it is, what we do and the process and everything and tools available for us. Uh, I wanna add this core, a significant word has been said, but for. And start with the vision, what do you want for your community? Um, we all want jobs, more jobs. We need more people for those jobs, we need more investment in those communities. If you have a vision for how you want the community to look like, that means a lot to do with quality of life. If you have a job, have a decent place for living, everybody find what they do. So in terms of commercial space, all the services are met. You have the restaurants, you have the shopping, all the needs are within the community. Your workforce does not leave your community because they got housing in the community. And uh, the, the people who live in the community, they can find the job opportunity within the community. So basically what you're looking for with economic development is the opportunity. Making sure the community has a sustainable way for providing generations with the opportunity to be within the community. Uh, that encompasses a lot, a lot of facilities in the community, infrastructure to facilitate that process. So if you have this vision, why do you need to incentivize? Because you look around, you want the, the, the market and the natural dynamic to provide that. But sometimes doesn't happen as fast as you need it. So what do you do? The code allowed us, it's perfectly legal, allowed us to use tools as government to invest in that future. We see how the future we, we want would look like. We have a way to speed up that time and invest in our future. How, how do we do that? Basically, we partner with private development and investors, providing them tools to incentivize them, to recruit them to the community, to come and invest in the community. And a lot of times, we have to intervene because it doesn't make sense from a financial perspective. Why are we chasing housing development? Because when you look at the construction costs, things are rising. What they can uh, get back as a return on investment, it does not make sense. So what do we do as government? Fix that gap for them. Look at the gap, if there's a risk, mitigate that risk. Because if it's investment, it's business, there is a, a business risk. We look at the gap. And how we do that? Not every project that comes to the community deserve an incentive. That's the first test we do. Qualify that request, whether it's eligible for assistance or not. But for, we think hard. Without an incentive, would that investment happen in a community? If the answer is no, then we got, we look into the, the details of the project. One, if we have an urban renewal area, it's always has a purpose. To illuminate light, um, uh, if a business retention, expansion, uh, housing. You guys have those purchases set already in the plan. You test for that project, does it meet that criteria? If the answer is yes, you go further. You look at their portfolio, how they break down their project, their investment. If you, if they identify a gap in their funding, in their financing, you target that gap to fill it. And basically you're telling them, you can go ahead and invest. And you know you worried about taxes, but I can give you a deal. Remember, you don't have that money to begin with, you don't have that tax revenue you worried about. You're promising them, you're telling them, for five years, you don't have to worry about the tax. And that will amount to uh, two hundred thousand or five hundred thousand. That's the gap they had in their financing. Then it makes sense for them. So you're invested in your future, they come in, they build it, uh, they, they create commercial space, employ people, and you, 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 you get to put those in your development agreement with them as conditions for them to get that tax rebate. They have to meet those for you. And you can come up with all the conditions you want. You want them to be open a restaurant and, and, and that restaurant needs to be in operation within, within this timeframe. Basically, and why is TIF is really a, a good tool? Because it pulls the community resources, it pulls from the revenue that goes to the, the um, other taxing jurisdictions. So in a sense, as a community, you're collaborating to incentivize that tax base. And guess what? The five years will be over and you get to keep all that money. That tax revenue you invested in recruiting and building, you didn't have before that. And you had the jobs for the people in the community, you kept the people around, that's your revenue for you. And also um, you, you attracted more because we, we all know that about the multiplier effect. You target anchors for those areas. And if you're, you have an area that needs attention, lighted, you target that with revitalization because the, the, the value would appreciate. And, and in, in a long, long, long time, the community will continue to reap those benefits because you invested in anchors, giant projects. If you don't make that decision easy, you'll get how significant that impact would be for you and you decide whether to invest in that or not. So it's a great tool, we've been utilizing it. Uh, I used to work for the city of Marion. We've built, and I'm sure you've heard about how growth in Marion and, and uh, great industries and commercial uh, businesses locating in Marion and the housing growth. And they keep getting also uh, the, the state attention with awards and everything. We did a lot. So we, we targeted the brownfields, redevelopment of areas that would not have developed without us getting uh, in, in, in that partnership with, with a private developer. We gave them up to twenty years. Why? Because they're anchors. And if you drive through Seventh Avenue today, it looks different. It used to be an industrial. And look at the, the corridor, because we started with a vision. We, we spent years and years, ten years in the making, but now it's a different story. And we almost, uh, or now here, you know, in Oskaloosa, they almost don't have to do anything. In Oskaloosa, I'm doing the same. I'm targeting redevelopment, we're working, we have a lot of progress in the pipeline and it's helping us with. Uh, those are housing, we're redeveloping uh, a school, an old school into housing. Uh, we greenfield development, market grade. We're setting up urban revitalization area for multifamily housing. Uh, and, and maybe you heard about the post office. We refurbished, rewalled that into a restaurant. It used to be a federal uh, uh, post office building. It would not happen, that investment would not have happened without this, you know, Oskaloosa investing in that project. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
I had, Mark, just before we move on, a couple of comments that I wanted to mention as well. You had mentioned um, the governor's comments and the IEDA, and they are a great partner in a lot of these deals. And I use the word partner because if you talk to Deb Durham or you talk to Jimmy Thompson who does a lot of the um, downtown work, they expect community involvement. They're only going to award um, state incentives if the private business has some skin in the game and the local government has some skin in the game. So if you want to tap into some of those resources or do more of that than you already do, they're gonna expect you to have some of these tools in place to help uh, bring in those dollars. So just keep that in mind um, as well. Uh, and the second piece is, I think that one of the reasons I think TIF is such a powerful and important tool in the state of Iowa is because it is a local government tool. It is something where um, pooling the resources, I think, is a great uh, comment, Amal. Um, and the local government is the one deciding what project is a cornerstone for our community. What do we need here? And they can target um, that. And so although the state does a lot of things uh, very well, I think the use of TIF is a really important tool for the cities and counties to maintain because they know how to use it. And from five hundred, from the smallest of communities to the largest of communities, they use it. And, and I think for the most part, use it very wisely.
Thank you, Nathan, for adding those additional comments. And thank you, Amal, for sharing your experiences. Um, one of the things, you know, we, we talk ad nauseam, if, if sometimes about, you know, here's what we're hearing out in the community and here are the challenges that others are having when it, more geared towards housing, but it also ripples over into some of the commercial development, retail development. How do we attract talent to our community? And the next three presenters, um, they're really gonna speak to that struggle that they have on a daily basis and what that struggle means not only to um, them as an organization, but even the people that they're trying to bring to the community. So um, with that, we'll start with Mike McGory. He's the superintendent of the Otomo School District.
Thanks a lot, Mark, and good evening to everyone. Uh, it's a pleasure to join you this evening. I probably, my message is, is twofold probably. One is, is that um, when we talk about economic revitalization, I think you can look at our district and where we're at right now, it's really educational revitalization. And what we've done in the last five years, I think, should impress upon our community that this is possible, economic revitalization's possible as well. And we believe as a, as a school district, we wanna be partners in that. But when you look at what, as a, as a school district, I can't tell you how many times I've heard, well, you can't do that, uh, you'll never be able to do that in Otomo, you'll never be able to accomplish this. In the last five years, we've invested over sixty million dollars in revitalizing our schools, which revitalizes our community. We've done that without raising property tax. It can be done. And Otomo has to, they have to start accepting that attitude. As this can happen, the people in our district now see that, our parents see what's happening in our district. And the same thing can happen economically in our community. How did we go from having open enrollment problems, major open enrollment problems out and not being able to attract students? And in five years, we've eliminated open enrollment out, uh, people wanting to go out and we're gonna attract these students to the point we're one of the fastest growing districts in Iowa. How does that happen? It happens because the belief in the product that we provide is enticing people to come to Otomo. And that same thing can happen with economic development. If we're willing to commit to it, the district is totally committed to be in a partner. We, we can illustrate some examples of what we've done with economic development where uh, we have probably built more houses than almost anybody in, in Otomo. We've built four houses in the last few years. We have, we're building apartments right now. We're gonna do whatever we can do to support this initiative. We, we're, we, we have bought into the regentrification of the downtown with Carr Campus. We have bought into, we know what will attract people to our community is amenities. The amenities we, we partnered, which was a great partnership for us, was the tennis courts. Uh, but we've done a lot of other things that will attract people to our community. And housing is such a huge need in our community. And this is the time, this is, right now is an opportunity for our community to go all in on this because it can happen. I think what you've seen with our educational revitalization can be the same for our economic revitalization. And um, as a school district, like I said, we wanna be great partners in that. Um, and we wanna support that because we all are one of the larger employees. And, and why, why we're not struggling to hire teachers to fill our positions like most districts are? It's because of what we're doing in our district. And I think that same thing will happen if people see the economic development taking place in our community as well, so. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mike. And next, unfortunately, we don't have the microphone, just stretch over there, I don't think, okay, okay. Joy Alexander, who is the CEO of River Hills Community Health Center.
Yeah, so I can just build on what my, Mr. McGory uh, talked about. And basically, um, I'm a displaced Eldonite um, for, for twelve years ago and moved away and was enticed back to River Hills by um, some recruitment and um, and the thought of being closer to my family, which still lives in agency in Eldon, Iowa, and my mom in Knoxville. So it was a, a big move to move from Mizzou, uh, Columbia, Missouri, all the way uh, to Otomo. Some of what did entice me though, was the incentive to build a home. So when I first arrived in Otomo and did the interview and talked with the folks at River Hills, my first thought was, what's the real estate look like? Because I'll need to relocate. And um, so right away, because of the tax incentive, I built a house instead of buying one to refurbish. So um, I'm right in front of Liberty, um, a beautiful school, uh, in front of Liberty School. And I've watched the school build those homes around me. Um, they're, they're beautiful and they uh, sell quickly, so that's lovely. As a recruiter of physicians to this community, I'll tell you our, um, you know, twelve years ago when I lived in agency and, and moved south, or now thirteen, um, there was a physician community of about sixty physicians in Otomo. And I'm sure if you're from this area, if you doctor in this area, you know that there are not sixty physicians anymore. And so River Hills, in the same way that the school is partnering um, with the community to provide incentives, River Hills is also meeting with Mercy One and Otomo Regional Health Center and trying to recruit um, or rally around to the purpose of getting uh, medical enterprise so that you don't have to drive to Des Moines or to um, Iowa City to get your care. Because we need to stop that outgoing of, of medical care. Um, it's A-OK to use critical access hospitals around here, I'm not gonna criticize that. But certainly would say that um, it, you know, your medical care is also an investment in, in this community. So I'm pleased to say that I've probably interviewed fifteen physicians over the last um, two and a half years. And um, I would guess a third of them at least would intend to build rather than um, for just a home that's existing in Otomo. So I think there's some inspiration that we can build upon um, in this community. The other um, things that I could say from having not been here and, and then moving back into the community is that we have a fabulous trails and park system. Everybody who comes here talks about that. The legacy is a um, a, a great foundation for us to, again, wheel in some um, small funding and again, trying to build that medical enterprise um, to make sure that we have people spending their money in our community. So, thanks.
Thank you, Joy. And next, Zena Boyd, who's the Human Resources Director for JBS.
Thank you, guys. Um, several years ago, I sat in front of the city council and talked about how important housing was for us. I needed two hundred people that day. Like, I could have taken two hundred people, but where would they live? Um, through some, a long process, we did get the apartments built. Um, it was difficult. It was almost a project that didn't happen because the incentives that were necessary for us to, to be able to complete that project, that the developer needed to be able to do that, it was, it was a challenge. But thankfully, everything worked out. We ended up uh, being able to build those units. And not only did we gain those two hundred people, we were able to take on sanitation, a whole nother shift, and hire another hundred and eighty people. So, you know, we have almost twenty-seven hundred people down there now. And there's apartments that has helped us tremendously be able to um, ease that fear of relocating here. Um, you hear a lot of, it's expensive to live in a lot of other places. The Midwest is just a, a better place overall to live and people are, are migrating here. But if there's nowhere to live, it's difficult for, for them to come somewhere where they may find work, but they don't have someplace that they're gonna be able to live. Um, we this year, or late last year, got a new general manager who grew up in Bloomfield. He's from this area. If we didn't have the apartments, he wouldn't have had somewhere to live. He lived in those apartments for seven months trying to find a house before he could move his family here. So, you know, and so he knew what the apartments were like and he knew that it was not what everybody was worried about. So we're very thankful that we have them. We're very thankful to be able to have had that project. But I can confidently say we would not be where we're at today if that had not happened. If we did not have that ability to be able to house so many of our employees who a lot of times are coming here for a, a fresh start, a better opportunity, and they're not gonna be able to. and they're not going to be able to have that if they can't afford housing. Because it's expensive on top of that, renting or buying is expensive. And there's just people who are not in a position to do that. These apartments allow for that. And so the incentives and the, the partnership with everybody was a huge part of that. We're, we're very thankful. But I, I think that there is definitely room for more. And I, again, we're just a testament of, it works.
Thanks, Zena. And to that point, speaking of, you know, what the housing market actually looks like, we do have A.J. Givock with us from Remax Pro.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about the challenges that I face working with about four different groups. Like, I've kind of categorized them into four groups. So the first group are those that have committed to Otomo by way of employment. So they're not from the community. They found successful and gainful employment here in the community. They get to the community, there's no new inventory, there's no new houses at all. The, the new houses are late nineties, early two thousands, built out in Quail Creek or Cambridge Court. So they either end up leaving our community, going to Oskaloosa or Fairfield, and then commuting to Otomo. Well, they're still working in Otomo, but they're not a part of our community as much as they would be if they were living in Otomo. And furthermore, will they stay in Otomo? Will they find a job opportunity in the community that they have found housing in? The second population are those that are considering employment in the Otomo community. So very regularly do I work with Andy Ma on providing community tours to folks, physicians, lawyers, engineers. They've got people that want to hire them in our community, but they can't find housing that will satisfy their needs. Again, low inventory, no new housing stock. The third group, and I think this group is overlooked in many cases, are those retired folks. Those people that are looking to stay in the community, they want to downsize, but they don't have very, very many opportunities. They want to go somewhere where they don't have to mow, where they don't have to do snow removal. And we have very few duplex, I'm sorry, condominium options in Otomo right now, a very, very small amount. So we're seeing those folks, again, move to surrounding communities. They wanted to stay here, they can't find the type of housing that they need to stay in the community. And then lastly, and this is the group I work with the most, are those that are here. They want to stay here, they grew up here, but they don't want to move from their house because they can't find anything else better. So they stay in the same house for twenty, thirty, forty years, which doesn't open up anything for other folks in the community. So those looking to upgrade, great, let's get them into a new house. We'll open up their house for someone that's looking for an upgrade, and so on and so forth. But we'll really have to look at new housing inventory before we can do that, effectively.
Thank you. And finally, I would thank you, A.J., first of all. Finally, I, I think that, you know, we hear all the time from the quote-unquote experts in the room about, you know, the challenges that we have attracting people and getting them to live in Otomo. But we never really have the, the privilege of hearing from someone who actually has went through this process. And Joy, Joy just did. But we have an individual here more recently that has just went through this process. And, and I'd like, I'd like Cameron Warkeys to go through a little bit of the challenges that he has went through recently in getting housing in the city of Otomo.
Sure. Thank you very much for having me tonight. My name is Cameron Warkeys. I'll just give you a short background of, I guess, why I was asked to speak here tonight. I'm originally from Iowa, born and raised from Fort Madison, Iowa, community. And this, I kind of fell upon Otomo by happenstance. Career opened up outside of my career of law enforcement. It opened up opportunities for me to have a better work-life balance than getting called out to crash investigations or search and rescue cases on a near-reoccurring basis with the sheriff's office that I was working for in Wisconsin. So I took a position with Indian Hills. I'm currently the director of campus safety and security and emergency management for the college there. I've been in that role for almost three years now. The recent occurrence that I have dealt with Otomo Housing on was when I intended to move here with my wife, who was a school teacher. And then thereafter, we had our son, our firstborn son, Stanley. We experienced a severe issue with the housing that was at least attainable in Otomo. And not only that, but A.J. spoke on it very well on the new stock of housing. I will say that between my time of, you know, living away from my family from Fort Madison, going to college, taking those steps in life to be a resident in the communities, this is the one community that I will say it was a little frustrating by the fact that it was very hard to find the sustainable, attainable housing that was just honestly built for middle class. It wasn't to the point that it was low-income housing. And that's not a, that's not a, a rip or, you know, an issue that I have. But I, we have the means to afford better housing opportunities, and that is not what is available in Otomo right now. We had struggles, and we actually gave Otomo about a year. Indian Hills put me up in a dorm, which was not obviously the best option, but it was temporary. So they put me up in a dorm for about as long as they could for free to try to help me find housing. And we started the process, and we took a year. I later moved into a rental place that A.J. offered to us in your downtown district. It was great, but it was too small for our family that was growing. And we knew the whole move to Iowa was better work-life balance, we could start our family now. And I was really hoping that Otomo would be that starting board for us. Unfortunately, it was not. We could not afford to give Otomo longer than a year of time to figure out the housing issues that they were already sorting through. I know that the housing study was, had taken place. I know that there was attempted to start growth and TIF and other things, or that there was at least those discussions. One thing I'll note is the communities that I've been in have not been afraid to spend those tax dollars appropriately to get the updated housing, get the developments, or revitalize the areas that are already existing that are dilapidated or having other just sustainability issues for good quality housing in their communities. And I've lived in a lot of communities. I've lived in the Madison metro when I first started as a deputy sheriff. And then I moved to the Beaver Dan area, which is a community somewhat like Otomo. But they have one thing different, and that's their ability to grow and promote residential development, and they did it at a fast pace. When we were there for the two, three years, they were growing very rapidly, and they knew their strengths to get developers in and grow that community. The same can be said for my small town of Fort Madison, which is smaller than your population, or even Fairfield, where I actually live now. They have partnered with, or the city, for example, in Fairfield has partnered and put money, tax money, towards land development and actually helped purchase land. They recently were in the news with a purchase of, I believe, about thirty-five, forty acres of land, which is intending to be built and developed with brand-new stock homes on that, on that acreage. And it's going to be a great development. They have developed north of town as well, and that's actively being built now. And again, back to Fort Madison, where I grew up, they partnered with local construction contractors and people actively wanting to engage in their community and given incentive-based development dollars to make sure that the developer and community members are kind of at a happy medium so that you have affordable housing, but also making sure that developers have some sort of baseline to still make a profit and keep things growing actively. One article that I read after I was asked to speak at this was actually a recent one from Fort Madison in July. Now that COVID has, you know, subsided a little bit, they're, one of their developers, Morfeld, is looking to revitalize a old school property that I remember growing up. It's a razed school property, and it's just a vacant lot. But they're looking to completely build new apartment complexes, which is the first time since the sixties that they're building brand-new apartment complexes. So things like that are crucial to the growth. And a hindrance, from my experience of coming to the community and just kind of feeling like there wasn't, respectfully, there wasn't enough being done. And I come at this with the utmost respect because I just want you guys to understand that I feel like there's more that could be done. There's never, you know, there's not a better time than now to start getting this done. I feel like we, even though I'm not part of your community anymore, other than working for the college, I would really love to see community development in the fact that housing needs to be a priority if it isn't already. And new housing for middle-class, affordable, nice housing needs to be the priority. Because I live in a community now in Fairfield that actually feels like a true neighborhood, which is something I, other than the very high-class homes, like four-hundred-thousand-plus homes, it didn't feel like Otomo had true neighborhood environments. And that's a stark comparison to Fairfield or even Oskaloosa. We looked at Oskaloosa, the house that we wanted up there, just so it was going to get sold the next day. So we kind of missed out on that opportunity. But we looked all over, Hella, Oskaloosa, and Fairfield were our top choices. Second to that were Mount Pleasant and Bloomfield. And it was because of the community engagement, development, and sustainability of their housing growth that we liked the best and that they had new housing stock. The house that I live in, my wife and I, our son live in now, was built in 2017, for, for reference. So I can't say that I can pin down too many homes outside of what the school district or the college has built for the city of Otomo that has been built as of recent, outside of maybe some private development that I'm not aware of, like from the River Hills CEO. So I would just hope that you would consider all options, including one that I don't believe was mentioned, but I don't know. It, it might be too new in Iowa, but Des Moines is looking at a variation of funding under a community land trust, which helps sustain affordable housing for communities and growth in that respect. I'm sure some of the experts could talk more about the legal nuances with that as I have legal expertise in criminal aspects, not housing development, per se. But still, TIF, tax rebates, and possibly for Otomo, pursuing possibly the second community for community land trust could be a sustainable and hopefully economic viable option to help grow communities and prevent a situation like mine from turning into somebody leaving their community. And if not for my job, or my wife's teaching in the area, I don't know how long we would feasibly stay here. And that is simply due to the fact of the housing issues that we're discussing today. So I do appreciate that I was asked to be here. Again, thank you to the council members, thank you to the county supervisors and administrators with the city. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing my story. And before we open it up to questions, I just want to share a little bit of personal experience from, from an economic development perspective. One of the challenges that we have, I know Kelly Jenners with Legacy Foundation and I, and Zach Simonson as well, we have had multiple conversations with many developers, be it residential developers, retail developers, or commercial industrial developers. And I, there, there is a common theme. And I, I want to back this story up just a little bit. A while back, I had went to, and I know that I had shared this story with the city council during the quarterly update, but I don't think that I shared it with the county supervisor, so that maybe this is more for you and the public. A while back, I had went to an economic development training, and at that training was the CEO of the largest site selector service in the United States. And it was asked of, of that CEO, what are the qualifications that you look for when selecting the communities that you're going to look at? When, you know, spending the dollars, at least researching whether you want to be in that community or not? And the answer that he gave was a little bit shocking to me, and it was a little bit of a wake-up call. When we look at retail development, for example, one of the things that they look at, and no surprise, they look at traffic count, they look at rooftop count, they look at median income for the community, they look at, you know, high school graduation rates, things, things like that, the, those nuances of a community. And industrial and commercial developers don't look at that. The first thing that they look at is, what are your community incentives? What are you going to do for us to get us here? And the, the words that he said next were a little bit frightening to me, to be honest with you. If he goes to the table with one of those communities and they stumble, and they don't know, at least in general terms, what those incentives are, he says, I walk away from that community, I won't talk to them again. Because they clearly are not marketing themselves correctly. That was, that was the first time that I had really, you know, felt those, those words. And then fast forward, on the housing side, there was a partnership that was formed between GoPit, the Legacy Foundation, the city of Otomo, Wablo County Supervisor, specific to the East Altavista property in Otomo. And through that process, we sent out RFPs to over fifty developers. And while there were several reasons why, and that runs the gamut of why they didn't ultimately end up sending, returning those RFPs to us, one of the consistent things that we did hear from the ones that at least expressed some interest is, how are you going to help offset that, that gap funding for us? Because Otomo is not in Des Moines, Otomo's not in Cedar Rapids. And where that is important is we have a little bit of a labor shortage here as far as those skilled trades, which means they have to import those workers to come down here. We're not next to the interstate, which means we have to import most of that product to come down here. We don't have, because most of this is in field development, we don't have anywhere where they can stage that material. These are all costs. So if there isn't something from the city, the, the local government, we'll just say the local government, if there isn't something on the plate that may help them make a quick decision, well, they walk away. And we, we have seen that multiple times since we started this conversation, not only at, at the Altavista site, but other areas in the community where we're looking to start, start some development. It's, it's a common theme, over and over and over again. We have developers that are walking away from our community. And I think Mike McGory said it perhaps the best. We can do this in, in Otomo. We just got to remove that blockade from ourselves that, that, you know, we, we don't deserve better, that we can't do it, that we're a dying community, all the, all the things that you've heard in the past. We can do it, we just need to get out of our own way. So, you know, the question is, if we want to market ourselves as a community, what are we going to do to market ourselves as a community? what are we going to do to market ourselves as a community? So, with that, I apologize, Aran, in just a little bit. You've heard a lot of information tonight, and I promised at the end we would open up for questions and comments. So, city council, thank you for taking the time tonight to listen. Supervisors, thank you for taking the time to listen. And if anybody has any questions, feel free to fire away whoever you'd like.
Yeah, right.
So, Nathan, finally Nathan Cole, you never met in person.
And see a call.
So, you mentioned that, you know, Atumwa's got the urban renewal, the urban revitalization in place, and other tools are already there. So, Oskaloosa has those tools and are using them. How are you using them differently than we are? Or, another question that I have, is your development more redevelopment? Meaning if the infrastructure is already there? Or is it from ground up, meaning that you've had to extend the infrastructure or even install the infrastructure?
I'll speak first and then I'll let you speak. Just that the tools are essentially the same. I mean, your West Gate area is similar to their urban renewal area. They really don't have yet as robust a revitalization plan as you do, actually. They're in the stages of putting that together. So, it's, it's other things that involves in the position to talk about.
Yeah, we are in the process of updating the revitalization one. But we've done both for green field. So, basically, the contribution is the infrastructure itself. That's for market rate housing. That's what we did. We also did the redevelopment and infill development. We're doing a subdivision right now that is infill development. So, we've done both. And what we do differently is, we started to market ourself, and we're reaching out to developers and investors. And we, we highlighted Oskaloosa through the process for a thriving community. Applied for that, and we got the designation, and we got an extension now. And through that conference, we, we had a large interest, and we're actively seeking those and advancing those projects and proposals. And one of the things we did also through the application process is highlighting the opportunities in the community that are suitable for the different type of developments. We created a map with all the opportunities for housing. And we sold it in a way that, just like when you sell for real estate, you have a building, you create a cut sheet for it, right? We did that for the certified site. We got one of the five biggest sites in the state, almost a mega site, five hundred acres. So, we adopted the process to go into preferred areas for development and trying to also direct the infrastructure development to encourage that growth. And we talk about our plans, we talk to developers when we meet with them. We talk about when we have innovation and how we partner, and we involve all the stakeholders involved in the community.
So, you mentioned that you went out to developers. Are they local developers or are they developers outside the community? And how far away did you have to go?
As far as Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, we talked to a lot of people. And even as far as Illinois, we have housing developer from Illinois.
So, I just kind of, the question, so kind of piggybacking off what you said, that you had a vision, you went out to the developers. So, then we talk about, and I guess maybe this is more from Mark. So, we talk about the area that the city and the county and GoPip and Legacy have come together, and we put out, I think you said fifty RFPs. My question is, so prior to putting out those RFPs, and maybe it needs to be a conversation now before we put out anymore, why didn't we sit down together like we are maybe today and come up with a plan of, this is what we're going, we've come up with this incentive plan, prior to that?
I think the simple answer is probably, as a community, there's a little bit, there has been a little bit of hesitation, perhaps, number one, number two, a little bit of ignorance of the process. And number three, we haven't had en masse people telling us what the problem was. So, I mean, you know, I can sit and tell you fifty different things that would be a great excuse, but really, that is what it boils down to.
Nathan, I can piggyback off that a little bit. Kind of what Mark said is, the process had always been, you expect that on-demand development is going to occur. And so, we need housing. People know we need housing, there's, it's up to them to build housing. So, we just expressed we needed housing, and we sent that out and, you know, kind of said, "Okay, well, tell us what you need, and we'll try to fill those gaps." And I think what we're finding is, everyone is essentially doing that. Where we fell short in the front end of the process is we didn't have the answers to the questions of what can we offer to them? And that's why we're sitting here, and that's what we're trying to do, is get those answers. In fact, follow-up conversation a month or so ago, I was sitting in a meeting with Mark and Kelly, and I think maybe Darren there and whoever else, and it's like, "Well, what can we give?" And I bluntly said, "I don't know. What are the five of you elected officials on the city side willing to agree to? We haven't set those parameters." And that's where just getting some information, hearing some different perspectives, getting the can-do attitude and putting it out there. So that when Mark is asked the question, or Zach, or Kelly, or anyone, you know, maybe we're not offering the moon, but where is that distance between what we, you know, the moon and what we're comfortable offering and getting to that point? And that's really what we're trying to do.
And I would add to that, to expand on that question just a little bit. One of the things that you'll hear from Debbie Durham with IEDA, one of the things that you'll hear with Kim Reynolds and probably a vast majority of the economists in the state of Iowa, is every community, to some degree in the state, even Des Moines, Waki, Pleasant Hill, they all have a housing shortage. So, we're not just competing with ourselves, we're not just competing with Oskaloosa or Fairfield. And this kind of goes back to my opening comments, this isn't about just, you know, who the next-door neighbor is and what can we offer better than them. We have a finite number of developers in the state of Iowa. They can literally be developing anywhere. To them, it isn't a matter of where they're developing, and I think Mike could probably speak to this better than maybe anybody up here. They're not just competing with, you know, community X, they're competing for the entire state of Iowa. You see that in road reconstruction all the time. Those people are reaching out to every community across the state. So, it isn't even a question of, you know, they want to be here. They're going to go where, where they can get the most bang for their investment. So, that's something that, you know, has become a little bit of a reality to us when we go through this process of some of the projects that we've been working on, is we're not just competing with Oskaloosa, we're not just competing with Fairfield or Bloomfield or Hella, which all, all of those communities, by the way, are offering incentive packages. So, even those smaller communities than Atumwa have, have opened up for business, so to speak, and they have started doing what the city of Atumwa has lagged a little bit on. So, the question really falls, you know, are we open for business or are we not open for business?
And so, also kind of following up too, so I'm guessing those developers and others are talking too. So, if they hear from a developer that comes to a media bar that, you know, we may be pushing back or we don't have a package, I'm guessing that would get around and put maybe a black mark?
It gets around very quickly, and I can give you a great example of that. Part of Mission 500, when that, that group was formed here locally and the housing study was completed, the task was, hey, we don't know exactly what we don't know. So, we pulled a bunch of people together from basically every, every specialty in the city and the area to find out, what are we missing in this? And part of that group was local developers. I don't know that anybody had really asked them in depth, why aren't you doing more to develop here in our community? Because, you know, of all people that you want developing in the community is the local developers. And they hit, they hit the nail on the head with the obvious that maybe, maybe we needed to be told just a little bit more directly than what we had ever been told in the past. There's a gap. And no matter, no matter what you say, no matter how much you try to sell the city of Atumwa or, you know, if we want to move outside the walls into Wablo County, no matter what pitch you give, there's a gap. For market rate housing, that gap can be anywhere between fifty thousand and seventy thousand dollars. If they have a heavy infrastructure load that they have to put in, in other words, run sewer lines and water lines a significant distance, that number becomes significantly higher. So, they're not going to want to build if they, if they don't have some assistance from the city because it just doesn't pencil out for them. And when the first developer doesn't get it, that gets out. When there becomes a struggle, as Zima had mentioned, that also gets out. It isn't, it isn't just the lack of incentives, it's the struggle to get through those incentives that also gets out to the other developers and make them not want to work with a particular community.
Kate Kavas, Ms. Alexander, I was excited to hear that you built a new home in our community. I would like to know, did you ask the city for any help? Does the city offer you any help, or did you just do it on your own?
I just did it on my own. I have to admit, I was enamored by the, the housing projects and, and a lot of the improvements that I saw in the city of Atumwa from the time that I left in 2012 until the time that I returned for an interview. So, I was definitely felt positively about Atumwa and the schools as well. But no, I did it on my own.
Well, you are a big commendant, and thank you. And we need to figure out how to find more people who either need help, or will ask for help, or will do it on their own. The city needs to grow that type of facility for people to live in, no question. Thank you. So, I think we're here tonight to kind of discuss possible incentives mostly. I have, you know, as we, we've sat in a few different meetings and we've talked about this, and we'll talk in circles with it. I think we need community-wide, city, county, a plan. What is, you know, I've heard this numerous times, chicken or the egg? Do you go after, do you go after commercial development? Do you go after industry, you go after manufacturing? You do that, where do people live? If you don't have that, do you need the houses? Well, it sounds to me like we need the houses. I do have a question, AJ.
No.
In talking to a realtor here just two or three weeks ago, a comment was made about a person put their house, had some people looking at it, they wanted four-hundred thousand for it. And his response was, "I have people all day fighting over under two-hundred thousand dollar homes, but anything much over that, especially the three or four-hundred thousand dollar range, they're not getting any traction at all." As we start looking at the Alte Vista site, let's use that as an example because I do like, one of the things we've looked at, one of the firms that presented with some townhomes, as you spoke about, and then some market rate housing around there that, that we do desperately need. Those homes are going to be in the three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar range. It's a brand-new home. But some of the four-hundred thousand dollar homes are nice homes. I mean, you know, the Quell Creek area and, and even Cambridge, they're within that twenty-year window, probably of being built. So, what is, I guess, your feeling on if you build it, they'll come? You know, as, as Mr. Rory's talked about, going to Fairfield and looking at these houses or buying a two-hundred thousand dollar house in Fairfield, or whatever it may be. I assume you're not going to be looking at a three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar range of a home. I understand getting people out of a possibly two-hundred thousand dollar home into those. If that's the case, why aren't there some more traction on a three-hundred thousand dollar house in town now?
You're talking about homes currently on the market?
Correct.
Well, I think a lot of it goes back to the fact that you're spending that much money for something that's twenty years old. You know, I'd rather have a brand-new three-hundred thousand dollar house, or maybe pay three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for a brand-new house, rather than something that, therefore, the amenities for twenty years old are going to need to be upgraded, rather sooner than later. Once we start opening up more homes en masse, and those folks in the two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar houses move into those, and there's folks out there, they can do it, the money's there, then you'll start to see more move it down below and trickle down. But, yeah, they were right, anything under two-hundred thousand is moving a lot quicker right now. Interest rates have been up towards almost eight percent, they're back down in the, in the high fives now. But their buying power went down significantly for about a year and a half there.
In your expert opinion, do you feel if we had fifteen, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar brand-new homes, they would sell? No problem?
Yes.
And you can survey for that, our recent survey or updated needs assessment showed that people said that there are units, they would move to a different unit, an upper unit if they're available.
Sure.
And we showed, we're lacking that range for owner-occupied.
I think that's what our housing says.
It does, it does.
So, and, and I realize that's there, and I, you know, it's, it's one of those that I think we do those things, and no fault of anyone else, what we do, we put it on the shelf because we're bought down with our thing, it's still there, we're still focused about it. And kudos to Legacy to keep this and Holly, but she's going through the waters, to keep these things, you know, on the forefront. As we start to talk about incentives and things, would it be the first to say, "I'm not a huge fan of TIF?" I think TIF has its place, I think it is a great development tool. As a county official, I do think more counties are looking at TIF, especially when we're looking at windmills and different things like that, a lot more counties are tipping maybe their whole road system to capture that, to capture that income with things. So, I think, number one, I do think we need to develop a plan, what's our focus going to be? And to me, I think right now the focus is on houses, what's, what are we going to invest in? Nathan, maybe you had said, like with TIF, because, you know, you capture the school's money or the county's money, you know, you're speaking toward the city with that, you use the rest of that money in a sense just to capture to pay for these projects. Correct?
Correct.
Correct. So, I think sometimes that gets left out, and I've talked to Mark about this and several other people. And this isn't a, this isn't a gripe or complaint, but I think through the years, it's become, well, the county don't have buy-in in things. But the city does have that ability to TIF and take from our tax base for these projects. So, we are buying into those projects. I think that's something before we go forward, I think, needs to be out in the open as well, that when you TIF, the school and the city and other taxing entities are buying into this. So, I, as a county perspective, it, it has irritated me when I was on council, it irritated me now that the county don't have a buy-in on it, when we do have a buy-in on it. That being said, as I said in our meeting, I'm ready to do something with Alte Vista. If that's infrastructure with it, I believe that's the perfect use for TIF. We need to get the study to put in what it's going to cost to, to plot these lands out, or do whatever that may be. I think as a board of supervisors, I think we're all in favor of investing dollars in. What I would like to see, I guess, and we can do this simultaneously because I don't think there's necessarily time to lace in all of it, is that plan. Because ninety percent of the town was in a TIF district. That's high, but not, not, but it's up, it's up. So, maybe send to our fathers a little bit, "Hey, the hospital's coming online, we're going to throw a TIF district on it." With no true plan necessarily of what we're going to do with that money. So, I think that's something we need to bring back in over the last twenty or thirty years of this and say, "Okay, what is our, what are we going to do to truly develop and stick to that comprehensive plan that, that we all, that we all want?" So, you know, I, they're here, they can speak for themselves, but I think, as a board of supervisors, I think we are in favor, I think we want to help develop, especially the housing, the housing stock because I do believe that that is, as a chicken and egg, I think- as a chicken and egg, I think that's what's going to lead things. And Mike, I agree with you a hundred percent. We've talked numerous times on things the school's doing. Uh just the feel and positivity and everything that I think the whole community feels from what you guys are doing and investing in uh the Farnie uh school and, and the new uh tennis courts and the indoor competition gym and everything else. I do think that builds on that positivity of the city. And when people do see that new development, you're always going to get the kickbacks, that's fine. But it is up. We are building. We are growing. We are doing things. And I definitely think it's time we start doing.
Brian, I would like to comment. I don't think Atumwa has ninety percent in TIF.
No, I said that.
Eighty percent.
Yes, right. I said it may be a miss.
The other thing I think we need to, to look at is that we really need to work on the overall plan, not just try and cherry pick houses or apartments or commercial business, whatever. We need to work on all of those in a plan, planned effort. Because we got to have businesses to bring the people, we have to have housing for them to live in and try to keep them from moving to some other community while they're living here or working here. So I think the overall plan is very important. I don't know who's leading us at this point, but I think the supervisors and the city council should get their heads together and figure that out.
It's all on you, Mark.
You got it. We'll be back next week.
Mark, if I may, one thing about TIF, so if you want to incentivize housing, you have to do that through cash. You have to spend actual cash that you have today. But if you wanted to use TIF, you're basically using money you don't have today. That building does not exist. You say that's, you're diverting county revenue. Otherwise, the county would not have that revenue. Think about it. You're using future money that would not happen to promise someone to have an invest and build that for you, for you to have that stream of money. You let them keep some of it and then you get to keep that because uh when those, a couple of years done, you get to keep that uh revenue or source of revenue forever. Think about it that way.
No disrespect. I know how TIF works.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're coming from a, a city manager's side of things and we've, we've been through, we've been through this with it. And that I, I'm not, a- as I said in the beginning, TIF has its purpose and its use. It can be abused. And I do feel in Atumwa, it's been abused through the years. And that's where I think we have to start refocusing today on what our TIF obligations are going to be going forward. I, I think there's, sometimes there's been a lot of balls in the air with things. Um and, and you're a hundred percent right. Uh I can speak to the Kohl's property. Councilman Cavanagh was on council with it at that time. I voted for that TIF uh because that brought Kohl's in. I wasn't in favor of the rebate that we gave them, but that's a personal. But I, I understand the, the reasoning of TIF. I understand the positivities of TIF. But I think it's also easy of another taxing entity to pull. I mean, we're all, we're all suffering with budgets and, and I understand and if you tip it at a hundred percent, you're just what it is, you know, it is what it is. Fifty percent, you're still getting that fifty percent on that incremental tax. The other fifty percent is going in. Cool that. There's been several that's been a hundred percent taxed and uh Cole, what's the airport act now? Do you know off the top of your head?
No, no.
I think it's a hundred. I, I think. But I, you know, I think it's those things like that where me as an elected official, no matter how I said, becomes whatever development happens at the airport, we don't truly reap much benefit of it in the tax base side of things. So that's, and again, and, and I think on the other side it comes, well, we are against this. Not necessarily against it. We are buying into it. It's just we don't have the choice of whether we're buying into it.
The benefit of TIF, sorry, is you can identify how you want to use it for a particular project, right? And I, I would just, as you put this plan together, to, to be brave and not leave anything off the table. AJ mentioned, for example, senior housing. That does get overlooked a lot. And I have seen in a lot of communities where if they do a senior housing project, it really helps free up the stuff below it. There are quite a few senior housing projects that get completed as low and moderate income because a lot of the folks that are moving in there are, have a limited amount of uh income. And if you do it as a low and moderate income, not only does it potentially make available some state funds, but you have more flexibility with respect to TIF. Your um, you know, your Alta Vista project is in its own uh blighted area. You haven't remediated that light yet because you haven't completed the project. So you have some flexibility in that. How you use TIF there may be different. How you use it for your infill projects may be different. In a greenfield site, it has to be based upon the public improvements. And so then it's, are you going to help complete that project or pay for that public improvement upfront? Or are you going to still require the developer to do that and just rebate some of the taxes? So I, I hear what you're saying. Um and I hear, also hear what you're saying. I appreciate what you're saying, which is not, it's not a categorical no. It's just, let's be intentional about how we use it. And the benefit of TIF is it really gives you that flexibility. And all I'd say is, think about all the different ways that it can be used and don't be, don't think, well, we can only do this one project now and this one. Because I think it's going to take all levels of housing to help you fix the problem.
Well, and if I can elaborate to on what Nathan said, so in addition to the work I do with CBRE, I'm actually also a national site selector for several national groups as well. So I've got experience of, like you're talking about, going and meeting with the communities, trying to figure out what is happening. And I'm not his example, but I can tell you from experience, if myself as a site selector or the commercial groups come in and are trying to put a project together, if the cities don't have a plan and don't know what it is and say, oh, we'll make it what you need, we'll put it together, it, it's, it's too vague. It, they, they can't understand that. It's just, it's not uh of a comprehend. It needs to be more of a, of a concise nature. Can say, here's the packages we have. We've got these four or five options we can do based on what you're doing. Here's the areas of town we have, which you can do a great job already of identifying those areas. Now it's taking, like Nathan said, the tools you already have in a very robust toolbox and identifying how you want to use those. Put that plan together, work with both the county and the city to do that and say, here's how we're going to work with our residential side. Here's what we're going to do with senior housing. Here's what we're going to do with infrastructure. Here's what we're going to do on a commercial basis. Here's what we're going to do on an industrial basis. I can speak from experience of trying to locate businesses in Atumwa, really, really hard because they can't find the employment. Can't find employment because you can't have the housing. So you ask chicken and egg, which one comes first? Frankly, it's probably housing. Housing will then bespoke the ability to bring in more jobs and to do the commercial and it will have a, a multiplier effect and it will go through. But if you ask which ones first, probably housing because that's going to drive the commercial.
And I think that's what I think really came to light with me, with everyone talking here tonight. So I think if nothing else came out of the room, it's that. But I think, I think there's been a lot of good and, you know, next steps, how do we, how do we do this? Is it a, a small group consisting of county and city and Legacy, yourself, whoever it may be, to put these packages together and then present them to the bodies, you know? What direction do we go from here? I don't think we're necessarily in a position to sit here tonight and
No.
Don't think so. So ten dollars.
I mean, I had my entire eight-day plan, so I hope I didn't hammer it out.
Brian, I'd like to ask a question. I hear the Alta Vista project. I know about Saint Joe and the Helgerson flats. Is there something else going on on that?
The Saint Joe, the Saint Joe property.
Saint Joe.
Yeah.
Okay. And we have water and sewer to that property.
Partially.
Take streets.
Par- partially to it.
That's water and sewers to the south end of that property. So that's as close as you can get unless you got a flat laid out.
Right.
Somebody's going to show you where to put the lines. So anyway, thank you for the comment. I was a little confused about the Alta Vista project. Thank you.
I was just saying, I think that the city and the county are in a pretty unique situ- are in a pretty unique situation right now to truly create a ripple effect for um Atumwa and Wablo County with the Alta Vista project. So I would echo Brian um in knowing what our next steps are and to, you know, not wait another month or another two months, but to truly get on this so we can um uh move forward and start that ripple effect now rather than six months in a row.
So I, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kind of the, the wheels kind of guy because, you know, it, it, Oskaloosa is, is doing these things. So Nathan had mentioned that with like a, a greenfield development, that are you requiring the developer to put in the infrastructure or are you paying for it upfront to help them out? So I, so that's my question to them all again. How are you, you doing it? Because um the, the way that I've seen other places do it is they, they've created a, 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 a TIF district and that they're using some of the increment that's being created over here to complete a development over here. But if there isn't that connection and they have to create a, a, a new area over here, there's no value um to capture, no increment to capture yet in order to finance tho- those, those improvements. So how is Oskaloosa doing it? Are you, are you paying for upfront? Are you requiring them and then a rebate? How is that working?
We don't pay upfront. So basically, we're creating a district and uh the improvement will happen and we reimburse over time for the infrastructure.
So, so what it is, is you're placing the burden upon the developer in order to, to create the, 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 the increment by doing the, the, the development. Which presents itself in a problem is that you have to have a developer willing to, to take on that investment over time. Because, you know, you, you mentioned Fort Madison and, and Moorfield. What I can tell you is, is that Moorfield has a couple of developments within Fort, Fort Madison. The first being a housing development. And having spoken with, with Mike, what he has said is, is that his wife will never let him do another one of those again because the, the, the rate of return on that is not, is, is not quick, right? He's not getting that rate of return. However, he's also doing condominiums.
Yes.
And he's put up condominiums and he's ready to do more because they're something like hotcakes. The reason why he's doing apartments is because he can fill the apartment, the, the apartments, right?
And that's why we have to intervene because it's not making sense. Putting uh on a sign a lot of money for them to wait a long time to get the return on that investment. And that's why we give them a promise, uh helping them with the cash flow financing. And some of them cash out of that promise. They can go to the bank and get a loan, they get us the promise. Discounted of course to have the cash flow upfront to pay for the infrastructure. There is always a risk you have to think about.
Yeah, and Cole, I think the, the issue is every site, maybe they're building four hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes up there where they have a little more margin than maybe they're willing to build in another community, right? Or, or maybe they already know they can sell ten of those homes in that particular community and here it'd be a, a longer game play. So in, one size isn't going to fit um all communities. And it may be, we, we definitely have some communities, it's not my favorite way to go, but we have some communities who borrow um the money and uh either purchase the land, I've heard that, talk about, put in the infrastructure, um provide an upfront grant on uh the infrastructure and a couple of housing get done so they don't, the developer doesn't have to carry that debt um too long. Um you know, that's all debt. If the community is taking on that debt, that is debt for that community. I have some counties, throw a little, towards the counties, who have partnered with the cities and have helped with infrastructure in the city to help residential uh development uh take off and borrow the money and help um pay for that infrastructure, et cetera. So uh all of those things are possibilities. And so my point to you is it, it's not going to be just as easy as writing some things down on a piece of paper. For Alta Vista, you figure out, we've been down this road once, this is what we already have. To your point, where, what, what's going to be needed? What do we think is going to be needed to make this happen? We have this beautiful bluff on this portion of the community. People ought to be able to build some four hundred thousand dollar homes up there. Maybe uh that's a different idea. Another infill site might be something different. So it's, it's a, it's not easy. It's not one size fits all. But to your point, I hear you. Some developers may tell you, rebating the infrastructure cost isn't going to be good enough. If that's all you're willing to do, all you can do is put your best foot forward. But and don't, no offense to any developers that are in here, but you, every developer's going to tell you they need a little more. Um they may even compare and say, hey, I got twenty-seven years of TIF rebates in Wisconsin. Well, maybe. Um and that, you know, you have, will have some guardrails perspective, how I am the law applies and so we'll be happy to help you with that. But um, you know, don't think you have to shoot for the moon um just because you hear that from one particular developer or another. I think what you're doing right now is, makes the most sense, which is figure out your opportunities. Figure out what it's going to take to try to make those opportunities happen and be aggressive and pursue it all.
I also, sorry, I also want to point out the importance of everybody being on the same page. So with our project specifically, what our developer was told was going to happen in the beginning and that was what the plan was made off of wasn't even in the realm of possibility of what actually ended up happening. And by the time we realized that and, and he was into it, we were already too far into it. So it, it's a great thing that everybody's on the same page, going to say the same thing. Everybody knows what, what's going on and that's going to make a big difference. And I think to the point, if we have that information, there's developers out there, right? You just have to maybe work a little bit harder and find those developers, right? If they, they don't want that incentive, maybe they're not the right developer for it too, so.
I think to answer your question from my perspective, um we've got two things we, that, that I see. Uh one is obviously the Alta Vista or Saint Joe's property. I think that's one where we definitely need to know where the comfort level is for incentives so that when we're looking at uh whether it's marking out that property as a piece again or working with somebody that's selected to develop it, we got to know what we can and are willing to offer uh from the county side, the city side, anyone else out there privately, um the developer, what risks we're willing to take on that. The other area um that I would say is, is still an opportunity is that infill development. At the last meeting, we had unfortunately um pulled the, the agreement off the table with somebody. They didn't need just uh, you know, some level of incentive. And it was a minor level of incentive from the city. They also needed the um tax credits that they applied for and didn't receive. So there was more than what the city was, they were asking from the city that they needed to make that project happen. If we're looking at an infill development, and this might be site by site, we've got a map of those properties, where are we able to offer some assistance in developing those sites? And I think those are two separate things, um but we need to come to the table to identify what the level of comfort is in both of those areas. And I think those are two, regardless of any uh new property or new land or anything else. So they're two that are right in front of us right now.
Well, I think the city, county, and the word we use developer all need to operate like a business. So you have to set up your plan, figure out your ROI and make sure that you've got cushion in there to reach that. If you don't, you're not going to be very happy first. But I think all entities have to put a plan together that works together so that you can build on, and I'm speaking for the city standpoint, so that you can build on reasonable property with reasonable return on investment.
Are there any other comments or questions? Well, again, I would like to first extend a, a huge thank you to everybody that presented tonight. I know they probably had a lot of things that you would rather than doing, so I, I definitely appreciate you coming, especially for the folks that drove out of town. Uh your, your expertise was appreciated. And again, just for everybody in the audience, it's not too often, hopefully we get to do this a lot more, but it's not too often that we have the, the supervisors in the city council in the same room together. So thank you uh both bodies for uh taking time out of your evenings and, and doing this as well. It's very important for the future of our community and um for anybody that is wanting to um see the uh housing plan. It is available um in many locations. It's on the city's website. It's on GoPip's website. There's a Mission 500 page that's available that, that has that on there as well. I believe the Legacy I believe the Legacy Foundation has it on their website. Um it is a lengthy document that I, I do believe that anybody who really wants to know uh what is going on uh with the housing situation in, in the city of Atumla. It's a very thorough document that will uh give you a pretty comprehensive look at, at what we're dealing with here. So with that, the Ministry of the Routh, I guess I would turn it back over to you.
Oh, thank you. Uh and I didn't have any additional comments, I made a couple there again. Uh I think we are going to continue the conversation um with GoPip, uh the county, city, uh anyone else that uh they're off the Legacy desk table on that one. Um but uh, you know, we're working together on these things uh and uh it is a very timely uh incentive issue. So this isn't uh something we can let linger for any length of time. Uh and we will very rapidly be having these conversations and we can hear those. Uh and I will turn it back over to Mayor then.
Uh do we have uh any other comments that the council would like to make?
Is there anything from the public here? They would like to make before we make the final comment? Yes. Ain't that tough? All right. Actually, I've been here for a couple of years, but I consider myself a real, let's say newbie for the area. But I come from Florida. I've been in the real estate business for quite a long time. I was handling a lot of, I worked for a builder and sold new homes there. And what I saw happen was outside of Lakeland, there was an Amazon warehouse. It was pretty, when I say warehouse, we're talking about, I think there can employ something around the area of a thousand people. The developers come up out of the ground. You don't have to go chase them. What are we doing here? To get, we had a herbal here, is that what it's called? Whatever, uh at the mall, it's closed. We had a Target store here at some point before I ever got here. What I'm really trying to say is, what's the incentive? Yes, we need houses, my goodness, we need houses. AJ can confirm, my first comment when I got here, when I went up in this, across the river to the north side and I'm looking at these old broken down houses. And I went in there a couple of days and looking at the basement, I'd say, how many houses are these people financing the houses? I can never get it. What are we doing to bring in the industry that's going to provide better income? Because the people will come. And the people, yes, they gotta have houses. But when the industry is here, the houses will come by themselves. People, I tell you, these developers away. What are we, what are we doing to try and bring the industry back here? I just didn't hear anything mentioned, that's why.
So to answer your question, I'll, I'll divide this into a, a couple of different uh retail versus commercial industrial. From the retail side, um the city and Legacy Foundation had made a, a contract a couple of years ago with a group called Retail Strategies. They're a national firm that specializes in retail recruitment in, in the uh community in which they're contracted with. And um that was a three-year plan that was put together with the organization. And the first year of that contract was really just, you know, let's get a feel for the market. Let's set the stage, that way we can do that heavy marketing after that first year. And uh we've been doing that. We've ran into a couple of roadblocks in that, that I'm sure you've probably read in the newspaper, which is one of our heaviest, to this point, has been one of our heaviest areas of concentration. Um so with that also, you know, there has been growth in the retail sector in Atumla. Uh retail sector has grown an average of about one percent per year over the last two years. So we have seen that, that incremental growth going forward, which is great because in a lot of rural communities in the state of Iowa, they haven't seen that growth, they've actually seen retraction. So um we are fortunate in that even though we don't have some of those big box stores coming in, we do have some coming in. But not the heavy influx. You know, the, the name Target gets brought up over and over and over again. And there's, there's a sharp reality that, that small communities across the nation really have to face with a company like Target. They're the golden goose. Everybody in the retail industry says Target is the golden goose. They're such the golden goose. Zach Simonson and I uh go to retail convention every year. Virtually every single retail chain in the United States that is, that is anybody is present to uh market themselves to the, the people that are attending that. Say one. That one is Target. Target is the only retail outlet in the United States that does not have to market themselves. Why? Because everybody wants them. We want to talk about incentives discussions. There's no way a company like Target is going to come to any community, be it Des Moines, be it um, be it Chicago, any place without an open wallet. And I can prove that by the city of Wake, who is currently building a Target. And the city of Wake opened their wallets for them. There is not a single thing that Target is paying for, for that property. They're not paying for the land, they're not paying for the infrastructure, they're not paying for the building that they're being put in. So, you know, if we want to talk about someplace like Target, for example, we have to have the conversation, how much money did we want to pony up? And even at that, does Tar- does the city of Atumla fit in Target's growth model? Because that's another important consideration. Looking at several of the businesses in, in uh that are going to those retail conventions, they're looking at minimum incomes, they're looking at minimal traffic patterns, they're looking at minimum rooftop counts, which brings us right back to the housing component of our conversation tonight. If we don't have that, that minimum household or rooftop count and we're not attracting those people into the community that meets that minimum income standard, then again, we're still going to suffer some difficulties in attracting places, not even Target, but places like Target, like your Macy's retailers and things like that. Uh we were, we were looking at a daycare operation last year coming into Atumla because we have a, a severe deficiency in daycare operations. At any one point, we're about three thousand slots short in Wablo County for, for daycare. We talked to a, a national chain daycare operation and uh the first thing that they look at, not, not household count. They don't look at traffic patterns, none of that stuff's really the most important to them. The thing that they look at is, what's the minimum income? Can they afford our services in the community? Well, unfortunately for the city of Atumla, the answer to that was no. So we were kicked out at the beginning of the conversation. So from a retail perspective, those are kind of the things that we're doing. Now from the commercial, from the commercial side and from the industrial side, I would argue that the city of Atumla has been working very diligently over the past five to seven years in, in Helgerson Flats. You've got to keep in mind that while the global economy has really been moving to Vietnam, China, um uh Hong Kong for a lot of the manufacturing. Um we, we have that struggle in the manufacturing. But here bringing that back closer to home, we do have a property that we've been actively pursuing, which is Helgerson Flats. I, I know I've seen you in council meetings before when I've talked about that. Um it's, it's a great, it's a great uh, uh property for development. We just haven't gotten over the threshold within. Part of that goes again to tonight's conversation, whether there's incentives that we have in place that we can offer those people. But it also transcends to uh where are we going to put the people uh when they do come here? Are we gonna, are we gonna expect people to drive an hour in here every single day to work? Because you, uh an important consideration to remember from a very uh factual place is our, our housing, our housing stock in Atumla is not growing. We have a finite number of houses in the community. And as, as uh Mr. Simonson will attest, and I'm sure the city council as well, at any one point in time, our housing stock, even with the occasional house coming onto the market, we have twenty, maybe thirty coming off of the market because they're placarded or they need to be placarded. So the, the real question isn't, you know, um what haven't we done? Because we have done what we could do. We are at a premium for a lot of things in our community. One of those things is, is uh developable infill space in the community. What's inside proper the city of Atumla is really Helgerson Flats. We don't have multiple acres in Atumla. There are very few uh organizations that have the luxury of having space available. JBS is sitting on multiple acres, which they're controlling all of that land. John Deere has multiple acres available, which they're controlling all of that land. Even, even uh Curing Dr. Pepper, Plastipack, Superior Machinery, Max Spas. All of those people have multiple acres, but they're occupying all of those acres. Um without tearing stuff down, which again is very costly and quite honestly, not the most environmentally friendly. Um which would also incur a heavy cost in and of itself. And that's not including the fact that there might be some environmental contamination underneath that that would incur even more cost. So um in, in short, to answer your question, we do have a premium spaces available. We have had a site certified with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And we are actively working on that. But there are some pieces that really need to fall in place to, to make it truly marketable in the, in the, the national, the community.
I think I want to comment, somebody said, I'm glad that Mark said, when we go, uh when we talk about retail, I have a retail background. When we talk about um getting talent to Atumla housing, we often talk about doctors, lawyers, nurses, retail workers, retail hourly workers, retail managers are also the same. I don't know if anybody knows this, you, you take Walmart, for example, they promote eighty percent from within and they hire twenty percent out. That means people go to other towns. Um and we need that workforce housing for them to come here too. And that's not just, you know, inclusive to Walmart, that's all retail chains, all of our Dollar Trees, all of our Harbor Freight that we're attracting. We need just as much retail talent to, to run those stores. You, you have managers, you know, there are uh, and I know for a fact now, and I'm sure it happens at every Walmart store, and even in our Atumla Walmart store, there are hourly associates and leads that drive from out of town. They would live in Atumla, there's just not affordable housing for them to live in Atumla. And they are talent too. Now, the unfortunate part of that is, is are we lucky to have them here? Yes, but the money they're making is going back to the communities they're living in. When they want to spend here, they're, you know, when people come to a job, when you come to Walmart and you drive from out of town, they're asking you, can I live in your town? Can I live in your town? Will you provide me a place to live? So I just wanted to add in here, I'm glad that he brought up retail and I'm glad that he brought up that talent too because it's just as important to bring, to bring that into our retail space as well.
I wanted to address it real quickly, and this is going to be very, very quick. He brought up a specific user outside Lakeland, for when they built their facilities, it brought developers around. That specific developer wanted to build here and opted not to and built another community because we didn't have the housing to employ.
Does anyone have any other comments that they'd like to make before we adjourn, Diana?
Um I just, coming out of a place of curiosity, was wondering, um there's a lot of talk about developing new houses of Mission 500 being an example of a leading entity working that long with the other entities you mentioned. Is there be, anything being done to take advantage of the houses that are already here in Atumla? I know Mark mentioned some placated houses or burnouts. Um some houses that just need a few updates to be uh in a place where they can house a family here in Atumla.
So luckily we have in the audience with us tonight uh the person who really has spearheaded that particular uh, that particular item that you're discussing. And I would welcome you two to get together and have that conversation. Holly Burke, who's the executive director of Lurkland Waters.
And I would say, um it's definitely something we're doing. We've also been working on new construction. Uh we are faring better financially on new construction than we are on the rehab houses because of how much of it's done. So when we look at those incentives that could be done for infill development, um you know, I think obviously there's a payment on the backend for a value that comes out, that's of course going to go to the buyer of the house, not us who's selling the house. So I think it would be great if we could look at um other incentives that the city could have uh to be able to help offset and retain some of that housing. Uh it's better for the environment and it keeps the neighborhood uh in that same feel. Uh but yeah, definitely something that we're doing, but uh is way more of a struggle than uh we're doing with our uh homes for Iowa housing that we're putting in.
And I might say to you again, just Zach's, I run the opinion of the Department of City, is that might be a good question too for anybody on the panel that has experience there is uh incentivizing rehabilitation is kind of a hard problem for us to solve, especially when we get to derelict housing because we don't want to provide a reward to people who have chosen not to perform adequate maintenance for years. And now they own a property that's so bad that it's not even be inhabited. They had no problem taking seven hundred, eight hundred dollars a month in rent until our inspector found an issue. But then they put their hand out to get an incentive, that's a hard thing for us to justify. And I don't know if anybody's got any experience with being able to incentivize that kind of improvement.
Yes, uh when I was in Marion, we put together, we've had uh COVID funding, ARPO funding. We put together a rehab program that's to, to help uh low income. So we contracted uh ECAG to income qualify the people who are eligible for, for the rehab, rent or loan.
You could make a requirement that it's owner occupied to help a little bit with your, your particular example, but it's, I know it's a similar struggle with an owner occupied who's in that situation as well. Um the difficulty is, what's your remedy if you give them a bunch of money and two years later it's in the same shape? And that bunch of money is relative, I know, I don't mean to use that loosely, but um there are some can put on there, uh try to have some recourse if they don't um perform or the property slips back into its current state. It's not easy to be favor intensive to administer that type of program.
Any other comments, questions from anybody? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn in the city council work session. I'll move.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming and spending some time.